Hello, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to our meeting for January 22nd, 2024. We are joined at the table tonight by a couple of students from ICSC. Would you guys please introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Viva Winkler. I'm the president of InterCity Student Council, and I'm a senior at Southwest this year.
Hi, I'm Alexia Linsley. I'm a senior at East High School.
Yeah, great, thank you. All right, we'll do the roll call. Kinsey?
Becker. McCoy here. Layton and Warren.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Gerlach.
Here.
Okay, we have six members at the table. Laura Layton Warren is joining us remotely tonight. We hope she feels better soon. So, would you all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy, would you do our mission statement, please?
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Okay, thank you. Next is our land acknowledgement statement. We, the members of the Green Bay Area Public School District, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of Northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the twelve diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities. Okay. Next is, under open forum, is recognition. Before we, before we, we talked to our guests, I just want to say that some of our staff this week and myself went to the state education convention down in Milwaukee, and Josh and Angie were part of a presentation. So they took part and represented our district quite nicely. Thank you for doing that, and I just wanted to note that. So, all right, Michelle, why don't you guys come up to the table?
Just touch it one more time. There you go.
There we go. All right, good evening. Thank you for having us. I am Michelle Hansen. I am president of the George Crest Foundation at Green Bay Packaging. And prior to that, I worked for the Shopko Foundation. I, that, and that is where I got involved with now the Green Bay Area Public School Education Foundation. So I'm here tonight along with Jill Thede and another member of our board, Kate Hogan, to talk to you a little bit about the Green Bay Area Public School Education Foundation, what we're doing and what our hope is for the future. And so, you know, this is a very new, this, we're on our third year of the education foundation. And we just went through a strategic plan ourselves. Our mission, and before I begin, I'm going to introduce all of our board members. We may have one or two more online this evening, but we are run by Patty Albers, Tony Erbar, Abby Grunwald, Cora Halterhide, Kate Hogan, who's here, Wendy Larson, Laura Moskawski, Jill Thede, and Eric Van den Noble, and Brent and Laura also join our meetings, as well as Dr. Tiller. And we are also supported, I'd like to recognize Lori Blakeslee and Amy Fish, who very much support our efforts as the foundation because we are, we are all volunteer. You know, all for the mission of the students and the teachers to give them the best possible education that they can get here in the Green Bay Public School District. So our mission is to elevate the educational experience of Green Bay Area public school students by funding innovative projects and programs beyond the scope of the district's budget. And it's our vision that every student has access to a high-quality education that prepares them for lifelong success. How do we do this? So over the past two years, we're on our third year, we take in applications from all teachers and staff in our Green Bay public schools. So they can apply for grants up to $5,000. And in May, we award them with funding. And some of the things that we have funded are Flex Farms. We've done recess read-alouds. Provided an author for reading leaders at Elmore and Beaumont. We've helped Martin start a book club. We've helped STEAM activities at King Elementary. And we provided multiple supplies for sensory and mindfulness rooms at Alder Leopold, Preble, and Lombardi. And these are just a few of the many wonderful grants that we have provided to our educators and staff to really help our students get the best possible experience that they can at school. And so our goal for the future is to expand that impact. And, you know, we've begun learning from other foundations and other districts. Sadly, we seem to be the best-kept secret in Green Bay. And that's what we really hope to change this year is to build awareness around what we do for the district and our teachers and, you know, build some relationships and support as many teachers and students as we can. And 2024 is definitely shaping up to be a big start. And I'm going to let Jill talk to us a little bit about.
I was too early on that, sorry. I got excited to push the button. So those of you who might have been watching the news last Thursday heard about the kickoff of the Give Big Green Bay. And I think it's either the sixth or seventh year that the Greater Green Bay Community Foundation has held this event. And the intent is to really encourage folks in northeastern Wisconsin to look at charitable giving and where they can make best use of their dollars. And it really gives some folks some great guidance about some of the fantastic work that's being done here in northeastern Wisconsin. We were thrilled that with our application this year that we were accepted into the program, into the Give Big Green Bay. With our first application, that was very exciting for us. So that's coming up on February 21st and 22nd. It's a 24 hours of giving from noon to noon. And they provide a portal where folks can go in. There's this year 50 different charities that were selected. Our hope is that we can engage folks, you know, our alumni. We can engage our families, we can engage our staff, we can engage our whole community, folks who care about education, into learning more about our educational foundation and the work that we're really doing to support our teachers and providing those opportunities to elevate our educational experience for our students here in the district. So that's a big one, and this is our chance. We haven't, we've done a lot of work in the past two years of building up the endowment fund. And that's what you really need in order to make these grants. And we've been able to do a number of wonderful grants that Michelle just shared, but that was our real focus area. This is really our chance now to try to get the broader community to be aware of this opportunity. And so we're really hoping we've done a radio ad that's going to be played, and we're hoping to get some other media opportunities and share some of the grants that we've already done. You know, the book club at Martin, some of us were there for a kickoff with them. Just so exciting to see the librarian and the families that are so excited to, you know, create a pattern of learning and reading for their students. Now, I've kind of been holding back on the next big excitement is coming in October. You're going to be Dancing with the Stars right here in this room. So we were selected by the American Red Cross as part of the local Dancing with Star, the Stars program. And Dr. Claude Tiller Jr. generously agreed to be our participant. So Cora did that this past year. She's a member of our team. I think she warned him about, but I can't imagine a better candidate to have the energy to get out there and, and really represent us and again, create more awareness about the educational foundation.
Claude? Do you know what you're getting into? Or have you been, has some, has someone been honest with you about? Yeah, I think he's committed already.
You know, the funny question becomes, do they know what they're getting into with this?
Okay.
So we're hoping we have a ring. That's our plan is that we have, we have the best to be able to showcase here.
And Andrew?
I mean, I, I think, I think there's something to that. You're, I mean, you're looking at not just a superintendent, but you're talking a Big Ten track star here.
Yes.
So I, I think, I think we'll do quite well.
Oh, I, I have no doubt he can do it. That's not my concern. It's just a huge, huge commitment.
But yeah, I mean, I think the athletics, it will all come to play. So, but again, great opportunity for us to hopefully get the word out to the community about what we can be doing to support our teachers. You know, I know my mom was a 25-year-old teacher for the Green Bay Public Schools. My aunt, same thing in special education. And I saw them, you know, constantly, you know, bringing things into their classroom and talking to friends and family to create those special opportunities for their students. And I'm just excited to be a part of the group that's going to hopefully make that a process that all the teachers can participate in getting those kind of grants and funds to elevate their experiences for our students. So that's really exciting. As we look to the future, Michelle mentioned it, we're out there talking to other educational foundations and trying to understand, you know, we're late to this party as a Green Bay Area community. There's even within our own in Brown, we're late to that party. But, you know, across the state, there's a lot of folks who are, are working with their educational foundations and figuring out new ways to bring innovative, different innovative experiences. So right now, we're working mainly with our endowment. But as there are other opportunities, we're looking at how can we bring some of those initiatives that might go across classrooms, across schools. And we're trying to understand from others who have done it, how we can use their best practices to move forward. So that's kind of where we're headed. We wanted to make sure you were all kind of on board, understanding, you know, what the education foundation's mission, vision, and kind of our exciting events coming up are, and hoping that you can also help get the word out. As we look at the Give Big, as we look at Dancing with the Stars, and we look at even people's personal charitable giving. We have a portal that folks can get to as part of the Greater Green Bay Community Foundation, where folks can make donations on there as well. So we're hoping that we can help get the word out now and continue moving forward and continue to grow.
Thank you. I know that this, the education foundation was a project that our former superintendent, Michelle Langenfeld, was very, she was very close to the, to the genesis of it, right, that for, for here in Green Bay and worked hard to get it established with, of course, other people as well. But it was very important to her when it was established. And, and you guys have done a fantastic job of growing it. And I'm just thrilled. I, I'm, I can't wait. This is going to be so much fun to watch, watch you compete, Dr. Tiller. I don't, does anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Any, our students or anybody? Okay.
Can you let everyone know how many applicants it was and how we were the fifth, pull of the fifth that was chosen?
Right.
Yeah, there were over 100 and, I think there were 168 applications and 50, 50 nonprofits were selected. So yeah, we're very, very lucky and thankful to be a part of, part of this.
This grows every year, and it's become quite a thing in Green Bay. And, you know, if you're lucky enough to be chosen, it can be, it can change the course of your organization as far as offering funding and support from the community, so.
Absolutely. Yep, and there's opportunity for, yep, matching gifts from the Packers organization. And it is, it's a, it's a really neat event. They had a great kickoff press conference last week, and there was a lot of excitement. It was wonderful.
Yeah, it's, it builds on itself. I mean, it's really about building community and anything that we can do to help that is a good thing, so. Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. Really appreciate it, giving us an update. Lot to look forward to. Okay, moving on in the agenda. The next item is our InterCity Student Council report. Take it away.
So at Preble, they had a student council-led blood drive. They're beginning preparations for their winter dance. I think they said it was last week, they had a cornhole tournament hosted by the school itself. And then their show choir competed at New London this past weekend and took third overall. At East, our academic decathlon team competed at regionals last week. We also had our show choir go and compete this past weekend at the same competition where they took 10th. And then shortly, we have our Silent Night basketball game against West High School coming up. So each school decorates their half of them, and both teams, like both schools are silent until the first team gets 10 points, and it's to raise money for homelessness.
Okay. Um, at West, their track season has officially started. Their Silent Night is happening next Saturday for girls and boys' basketball. They have a wing eating competition at that Silent Night, very exciting. And they're also having a spirit week with dress-up days. And then at Southwest, not a whole lot, our show choir also competed. We took eighth overall. And then, I don't know if you guys know about this, but the state superintendent Jill Underly is coming to visit our tech and ag program. I'm very excited about that because I get to talk to her. I do.
It's okay if you don't.
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head, but I do.
Okay, all right. All right, thanks. Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else? I, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, for the Silent Night, it's actually this Saturday, not next Saturday. Yep, and the pep bands will be playing. And the board has a basket for the silent raffle. This is a fantastic event. We've supported it last year, and I've been running around to different coffee shops as a non-coffee drinker for gift certificates, so. Yes, so, and I think it's actually Silent Afternoon. I think the girls' game's at 11:00 and then the boys are at 2:00. But it is a fantastic.
I think it starts at noon, actually.
Noon, so it's on the website, so. But it's a fantastic event, and I know a lot of us have gone before and highly encourage anyone to go. It's a.
It always draws, it always draws a crowd, and it's a great cause. And I've witnessed that wing eating contest, and it is fun. It's kind of a mess, but it's fun.
Is it true that Dr. Tiller is volunteered for that as well, too?
He volunteers for pretty much everything.
Sorry, Doctor.
So don't be surprised if he's got a bib around him. He's eating wings at some point. So, okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, the next center, the next item is the public forum. And I don't know that we, I'm not sure, I don't think we have anybody unless, unless you. Okay. So next is the consent agenda approval. Would someone like to read the motion?
I move that. I click on it first. I move that the consent items as presented be approved.
Second. Discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, thank you. The next is our legislative update, and we, that would be Lynn Gerlach. Totally whatever, whatever you prefer, Lynn.
Keep it, don't put it up, and it'll just be so exciting because you'll just have to listen to everything I say.
And which we're happy to do.
It's a good one this time, and it's all positive. And nobody's proposing that we be prosecuted for anything. So first of all, we have Senate Bill 837. And this, I'm so excited to say, is a proposal that we have a civics program in all school systems and that all children will be prepared to be civically responsible and knowledgeable adults. They're proposing that it be in the K-12 curriculum and that DPI launch it, launch the curriculum in 2025, 26. And by 27, 28, when you graduate from high school, you will have to have a half-credit of civics as part of your three credits of social studies. And then I have listed here some of the things that they said should be part of the class, part of the program. I'm not going to read them to you. I always think it's interesting to see who's supporting it. And so I noticed these three organizations are supporting it. They're all rather different from each other. I made them links in case you'd like to check them out. Can, can she ask me a question? Can Viva ask a question?
Absolutely, please.
Um, so I know, I think all of our high school students have to take a civics exam in order to graduate. Would this, do you know, would this replace that, or would it be like an addition to it?
Are you talking about a civics exam or a civics course?
Exam.
This would be a course, where you'd have to actually take a half-credit course.
So would it be like an exchange?
I don't know. Somebody said no. Okay. Brian has a question.
Oh, Brian.
As often happens with some of these bills as they come through, recognizing who's supporting and not, and as individual board members that are still on, looking at WASBA's website, they're currently opposing Senate Bill 837 having to do, and it relates with student instruction. So as we look into this on the surface, it looks like it might be a strong bill, but I'm going to guess there might be some concerns that'll hopefully be worked out in committee. So there's a lot of groups supporting it.
Okay. Number two is a bill to, not to require, but to establish a course in how to interact with law enforcement for children in grades five through 12. And each school district would decide which four grades out of those five to 12, they would put this in. My impression is that the school district would develop, develop its own course. And interestingly, it says at the end, unless the board opts out of such instruction by resolution. So I guess, you know, that's really very much a choice thing. Okay, now, the next three bills are all about career and technical education. You might remember last, last month, our theme was book banning. We had five bills. This month, it's all about career and technical education. And I was absolutely by all of the verbiage and all the concepts and everything. I just didn't understand what I was reading. So I called on the staff to help me, and I got a lot of good insight from the staff. And I have some background here that maybe you know this already, but I think it's worth mentioning some of these things that we have at any given time, about 3,200 students enrolled in our CTE program. We have 11 courses. It's taught, there are various ones taught at each of the four high schools. And I think it's really important that everybody understand that students can earn four different kinds of credit. They all earn high school credit, but some of them, a lot of them earn dual credit with NWTC at the same time. Some of them are earning AP credits that they can apply to the college of their choice when they graduate. And some of them are earning IB credits toward their international baccalaureate diploma. And also, I learned that the state reimburses the districts for some of the expense of, of having this course, these courses. We receive over $200,000 in reimbursement each year. And unlike many districts, we reinvest it back into our CTE program. And then I learned a little bit more about the Department of Workforce Development. And that explains, once you hear that, it explains all three bills. You probably know this, the Department of Workforce Development is always scanning the horizon to make sure that the workforce is going to be adequate for whatever needs the, the economy is going to have in the next, you know, couple of years. And they have determined recently that there might be a shortage of architecture and construction workers. And so that is what these bills are all about. And of course, we have a wonderful program in that already. Then they go, when they, when they discover something like this, they go to the technical colleges and inform the technical colleges, and then the technical colleges work with the local school districts. The staff indicated to me that they didn't think that these three bills would have any particular effect on us. If anything, it would be positive. And then I just listed for you here the 11 courses, which it was good for me to be reminded of what they are. And so quickly, the three bills are Assembly Bill 779. And basically, that just makes sure that this apprenticeship completion award will also be given for students in architecture and construction. Be sure they're not left out. I thought it was very interesting to look at the support and opposition for this. So this worried me a little bit, although maybe Brian would say it's not, it's not, you know, current anymore. But I found that there were 10 related trade associations and unions that supported it. There were five related trade associations and unions that have no position, but the Wisconsin Technical College Boards Association opposes it. That kind of worried me, so I thought that was worth looking into. Then the second one is Assembly Bill 550. And this is only just good news. So the state can award up to $50,000 grants to districts like ours that offer technical education. This proposed, and then we have to match it at 200%. So we can get 50,000, we have to put in 100,000. This bill proposes that they raise the grant to up to 100,000, but we have to match it only at 100%, which would mean 100,000, and we still have to match it only at 100,000. So that's just all very good. And this bill also proposes that the grant could be used for our educational facility and equipment for our CTE program. And then one simply, Senate Bill 747 simply adds the construction industry to the apprenticeship $500 completion awards. So all good, and I think we're in good shape, and that's my report.
Thank you. Those last bills sound very attuned to, like, if you talk to any local politicians now, or the Chamber of Commerce for that matter, I mean, workforce development is something that they, they swim around in all day long. Like, this is a big thing. Chronic labor shortage, skilled workers. These are things that are getting a lot of attention right now and have been for some years. And our district, I think, does a good job of doing the best we can to address that need. But more funding obviously would allow us to do even more, so that'd be great. Any other, Brian?
I talked about before with the, the trades and the CTE programs in our district and what unique opportunities we provide and are able to by having a district this size between bridges over at West to the automotive program at East and the, I believe at Preble, it's a C and, I'm talking to an East and Southwest student, so I'm going to stare at you as if you'll know this, with the health services and sciences at Preble and just the options that we offer between NWTC and UWGB and making sure that we have our students ready for the workforce. And it's, it's something that a district our size is able to provide with it. So I think we do. provide with it. So I think we do a great job with it and I think the community needs to continue to recognize that we're working with NWTC and we're working with the chamber and we're working with these boards to make sure we have students that are ready to work and join the workforce and they're properly trained, so.
I wish Jill Thede was still here because she works at NWTC and she speaks passionately about this.
With. Sorry.
Does she, I mean, talk to her about this and she'll tell you about everything they're doing um, to, uh, help our students and then the public at large.
And, and that combined with the youth apprenticeship programs and other options that the district partners with groups and the state to make sure that our students are ready to go. I think we're doing a great job. We can obviously improve, but I think we're doing a great job here and it's one of those great Green Bay things, so.
So hopefully these bills might help, um, help that, help us reach our, our goals in, in that particular area. So anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on then. Thank you Lynn. I love your reports. They're always really, really interesting. All right, uh, the next, uh, item on our agenda is referendum updates and that would be Josh.
In not a time of the year where we, um, we have a lot of visible action, um, the, the press box construction is complete at Preble. Um, and you can see now the masonry going up on the, uh, excuse me, the, the ticket in cafeteria, which is kind of that last step, working, um, our way out of, of that plaza. Um, you'll see tonight that you'll be asked to approve the general contractor for the remaining projects at West, which include, uh, the auditorium renovation as well as, um, some locker room improvements and some gym improvements, including new bleachers. Um, actually both West and East will have new bleachers in their gyms for the next silent night, not this silent night, but next silent night. Other than that, like I said, not a lot of action at, at this time with the recent weather that we've been experiencing.
When with the, um, the new seats at, at West Auditorium, when would those, when do you anticipate those actually being installed?
I both, I believe, um, and of course, like, we haven't hired the contractor yet.
Yeah.
Right? Um, I think the, the schedule has that, um, the end of construction activities, November twenty-second before Thanksgiving.
Okay. Go ahead Brian.
At the, uh, East dinner that they had, I had the opportunity to sit with a student that's active in the theater at West and he said that the students were excited to talk about the different color of armrests that are going into the auditorium and the chairs. So it's neat with these referendum projects of seeing the student involvement with it and I heard about the, the pros and cons of the armchair selection for about a minute and a half and it was great to hear, so.
I know nothing about this. Can you?
You were at the wrong table.
Can you, yeah, can you expand on this?
That, that was about it. It was a different color of armrests, whether it's a darker or lighter color and how to contrast and stuff, but it was great, so.
Okay.
Well, and the material. So we, we did go with the wood. We, we went with a, like, a, a wood material on, on the armrest as opposed to a composite plastic.
I'm sure it's all about durability. So, um, okay, anybody else have any other questions? All right, thanks Josh. Okay, next on the agenda, um, is contracts. So, um, would someone please read the motion?
I move that the issuance of contracts that's outlined under Wisconsin Statute, Section one eighteen point two-four for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, this is, um, just, uh, uh, just about the issuance of contracts. It's a yes or no vote and, um, that's the role of the board in this, so, um, do we have any discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is Head Start. Um, would someone like to read the motion, please?
I move that the proposal to resubmit the Head Start Grant with a request to increase the supplemental grant funding amount from two hundred forty-nine thousand to six hundred thirty-four thousand as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, discussion, questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is open enrollment space designation. Um, would someone read the motion, please?
I move that the open enrollment space designation as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, questions, discussion? Andrew.
Um, I'll be voting no on this and I understand why we're here with this. I understand why we're here with this every year. The, the bottom line is all school districts should be not doing this and then we would all be okay. There's a technical problem that's created when you're the only, if you were to be the only school district not doing it, which, which I understand, but I'm not convinced that this is worth, um, this is the right thing to do and just because other districts aren't doing it, um, that reflects my no vote. The, the problem I have is that if you have the, the knowledge or especially the, the resources, uh, and you want your kid who has an IP to come to school in, in the Green Bay School District, if, if you have the money, and I know people who have done it, uh, the money to legit, one hundred percent legitimately buy a home and move to Green Bay to do it, that, come on in, you can do that and, um, it just doesn't seem right that to have to say that if you have an IP, you can't choice in here. I also understand that there's, um, shortages, but this for me is a, a principal vote and that's why I'm, I'm voting no.
Okay, anybody else? All right, Kinsey? Oh, oh, I'm sorry Lynn, go ahead.
I just wondered if, um, Dr. Tiller wouldn't mind again reminding us what you said last time so that I get this clear in my head.
So presently, we don't have any seats left in special education. And, um, so when people choice in, we have zero seats left. So that's why we have to go this route.
And zero seats because we don't, we have seats, we have room. We don't have the teachers. Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried six to one. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Becker, no. McCoy, yes. Lainan Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lyerly, yes. Mills, yes. Gerlach, yes.
Thank you. Uh, next is the New School of Innovation Contract Renewal. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that the education authorize the district to enter into negotiations for the renewal of the contract with Green Bay Area Charter Schools, Inc. for Northeast Wisconsin School of Innovation to be effective July one, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, questions or discussion? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Next is, um, Policy three four three point seven lesson plans. Uh, would someone like to read the motion?
I move that the revisions to Policy three forty-three point seven lesson plans as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? For those of you watching at home, we've, um, we've, we've had, we've thought, we've discussed all these items already at our last meeting, but this is another opportunity if people have further questions. So go ahead Lynn.
I just wondered if anybody on the staff could explain to me, um, the genesis of this, why this is being done?
So currently, the teachers have to turn their lesson plans in on Friday. For this time, we're asking that they don't turn in lesson plans, but they have them available for if anybody comes in the classroom. Because what was going on, to be honest with you, that is inundating the principal and administrators and they didn't really get to reading every single lesson plan of all the teachers. So we was requiring them to do that extra. And then we weren't going over and looking at them that we should because we didn't have the man or the woman power.
Go ahead Brian.
Dr. Tiller, correct me if I'm wrong in this. It's also the understanding that these lesson plans are more fluid than what they've been in the past and it gives the ability to update and adjust, so it's lining up with what's being covered at that point, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, anybody else? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, uh, next is approval of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee membership. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that the individuals identified in the Clean Energy Advisory Committee memo to serve on the committee as presented be approved.
Second.
All right. Go ahead Brian.
Laura, would you feel comfortable just kind of giving a general discussion, the number of people that applied and just in vague number, or, um, sorry, large numbers in the backgrounds of applicants?
Uh, it's not attached to the memo, so I, I don't have that at my fingertips, but, um, the, um, um, yeah, but it's, it's included in the memo, um, as to how many applicants there were. And yeah, twenty-three applicants and, um, it kind of talks about, uh, all the various places that, uh, um, that information, uh, that application information was, uh, shared with the public. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, um, the memo outlines kind of the process. I mean, we are now, um, this is policy now and we're still kind of new at this and so we followed policy, the new policy on this.
By no means was this attempting to be like, I got you, I think. It's just, it's good to see the variety of, you know, some names are familiar as people I'm familiar with as just being very active in the community and some, um, to see new people step up and go into it. So it looks like it's, it's a pretty well, um, represented group.
I believe so. And Dr. Tiller and I had a, you know, had a look and, um, and, and went through this process together, which is what the policy says. And, um, the difference about this particular one though is that this is a standing committee. Yeah, it will, um, you know, the, these people are, um, will be on this committee for a while, but there'll be people who cycle in and out, uh, of this committee and there's no end date, um, because the work is, will be ongoing. So I'm pretty excited about this actually and I know there's some people that are, are really very, um, excited about getting at the work. Um, COVID unfortunately derailed this a bit. Um, we passed the resolution and then COVID hit and, um, so this has been delayed. And, um, the, the fact that we're finally getting at it now is, uh, exciting, so. All right, anybody else? Kinsey, all these people have been contacted, right? Yeah, so, um, it's just a matter of voting tonight. So if, um, if there's some more questions, we can go ahead and vote. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Okay, um, and the final vote is, uh, General Contractor Award for West High School Renovations Phase Two. Would someone like to read the motion, please?
I move that IEI General Contractors, Inc. be awarded the bid for the General Contractor Alterations Bid Package Two at West High School in the amount of five million, one hundred thousand dollars as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay. When I see large numbers like that, my first response usually is to express gratitude to the taxpayers and the voters of this community. I know I say this pretty much every time we start, but it's, it's, I genuinely feel like it's our, it's a, an opportunity to thank the public for supporting our, our public's. Any questions or discussion? Go ahead.
Josh, I don't know if you can approach or not, but just have a couple of questions about the nature of the bid. So it, it's base bid and you kind of outlined the, the general concepts of the improvement sets, um, at West. The memo states that you opted not to go with any of the alternates and just the base bid, but they're listed out and they seem to be something that you described earlier, the chair backs and things like that. Can you explain why I'm looking at a list of alternates? We didn't, um, accept them. We just went with the base bid. So what does that mean when it comes to flooring and the backs lighting? Yeah, so, um, sometimes when you're scoping out, uh, general contractor services, you have kind of your, um, your minimum required needs to complete the project. But then you also entertain the idea of alternates in case there is money left within the budget after your needs are met. So, um, in this, in this case, the base bid was, um, was at, was at a level that we didn't feel comfortable taking the alternates, um, based on how we had, um, had budgeted this phase of the project. But if, if the bids had come in lower, um, we had reserved the right to upgrade the materials on the seat backs, for example, or upgrade the, the flooring material. Yeah, it just didn't allow us to do that. Yeah, thank you. That was the nature of the question is, the bid was inclusive of these things and these were different finishes or elevated, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Uh, that completes our red, uh, regular agenda. Um, would someone like to read the motion to go into closed session?
I move that the Board of Ed, um, Board convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five-one C, considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to wit superintendent's performance evaluation.
Second.
Will come, okay. Kinsey? Gerlach?
Yes.
Mills?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Lainan Warren?
Aye.
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned into closed session. Thank you.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.